All right, let's call to order our Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, April 21st.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Now, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our invocation today will be led by Pastor Leonard Chisbro of the New Life in Christ Church in Ottawa. Go ahead, Pastor.
Yes, thank you. I come to this day with a heart of thanksgiving. We've got so much to be thankful for as people of this country. I'm thankful for all the county workers. I'm thankful for my Lord. He's willing to die for me on the cross and give His life for me and so I can have life and have life more abundantly. We've got so much to be thankful for. We never want to take our life for granted and don't want to take other people for granted. And I just give you guys all the praise and I thank you for your time you spend to help out in the county area. In Jesus' name, amen.
All right, thank you. Any correspondence? Any public comment? All right, our consent agenda today would include meeting minutes from April 14, study session minutes from April 19, claim vouchers in the amount of $701,587.36. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Under items of business, we're going to consider soliciting bids for multiple improvements here on this annex building. These include the lighting, the flooring, and improvements, painting and skim coating the walls, all things we've discussed at various times, either budget or I think we've been talking about the flooring for years and our office remodel brought up the lighting and this would be for the common areas in the bathrooms that all the tenants use in this building.
Yep, and we have Brandon on the line if you have any specific questions, but you'll recall at our retreat, you know, we had a pretty comprehensive overview of where we're at from a building maintenance standpoint and we're getting to the point where a lot of the quote-unquote fires have been put out, our roofs, and we're doing the district court HVAC now, but we've done so many improvements to our mechanical structures in our buildings, the annex parking lot. We're kind of starting to transition into the point where we're getting into some more, I don't know, fine details. We talked about public access points, like where on our properties do we have a lot of members of the public and what kind of impression do they get of the organization when they go into those high-contact places? And this building specifically came up and how you walk into that remodel and then you walk into the hallway, it's just a stark difference. And so, we're asking for permission to solicit bids for, as Colt said, the floors, the walls, the problems with the walls. It's the same right here behind me is it's like a paper material and you can't put anything on it and then turn around and take it off without tearing it. And so, you walk through those hallways, you see various tears. This will, we would be soliciting bids to put a layer of skim coat over the walls, which is what we've done to the wall behind the commissioners, just a much cleaner look. You can hang and remove signs. And as much as our, some of our tenants, take Advent Health, for example, change doctors, change, like there seems like they're always wanting to do something with signs and so this will allow us to accommodate them better. Flooring, we will be back in front of you with various options in terms of what we want to do. This is just meant to get the ball rolling, so not, either Brandon or I would stand for any questions that you have.
Have we already skim coated to that corner already, Derek?
It appears so.
That wall over there with the pictures, it looked a lot shinier. Has it had anything done then or not? No? Okay, it's just the angle of the lights, I guess. I know this look.
I think these two, I think these two.
Yeah.
Just a quick question, looking ahead. I know we pretty much kind of, the annex fund kind of got depleted, so if these come in fairly high, do we have a different option or are we just going to put it off?
Yeah, Janet and I have talked about that. We don't intend to use the annex fund for this. We have both of our general reserve funds that we intend to use, yeah.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion to approve soliciting bids for these improvements?
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right, let's go to staff report, Derek.
Yeah, staying in that same vein, we've also talked a lot about the historic courthouse and starting to make, well, we've started making improvements to that building. We've been making them for years. Another one I've had Brandon looking into, you walk through there, the blinds are all over the place. Some of the blinds are in decent shape, some of them are missing, some of them are broken. I've had him get a quote for what it would take to replace all the damaged blinds, add blinds where we need them, and bear in mind that there's a lot of windows in that building. He got a quote, that quote is $5,150. Now, that's within, well within my spending allowance, but I always tell you, I don't, if it goes over $5,000, I pretty well always bring it to you unless it's a covert or something for David. But I, it's my intention to move forward with that unless the five of you tell me otherwise. And certainly, we can make a motion and do it that way if you want, but this is just another one of those detail things that I think, when you look at the whole picture, like we're getting the building painted, like we've made other improvements structurally, it's sound, now we're kind of transitioning to the more nuanced details. So, do you have any questions or concerns about that?
Just for information, what color?
Brandon, I'm assuming they match what's currently there, which is like an off-white, is that correct?
That's correct. It's actually a gloss white. That's the color that's existing. Actually pulled a sticker from the existing blinds and got all the correct information, so we'll be putting up exactly what's already here.
I was just thinking of the color of the new, you know, the new paint and how that would look and that will look good, that'll be good.
Seems like a good price. Anybody against spending the money on that?
Let's do it.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
What's that?
I'm good with it because if you look at the blinds from the outside, if they're all even and looking nice, it doesn't, it adds to the traction of the courthouse. When they're all different shapes and broken and stuff, that looks bad.
Yeah, I agree, Roy. I appreciate that and I appreciate the board's transitioning a little bit, willingness to indulge us on these projects. Brandon and I talk all the time. We've really come a long way over the last handful of years, just in terms of our facilities, so thank you for that. I've told a couple of you this yesterday. I thought we had a fantastic discussion on Monday. For whatever it's worth, to the five of you, I thought you all did an excellent job on both of our items. Thought we had a great discussion about the historical society and then I thought several of you had great questions about the landfill and certainly know that's helpful for David and I. And so, thank you for that. And that's really all I have. I will, I know we've got Nick on the line. I'll transition here to Casey so she can give a quick vaccine update. Thank you.
So, vaccine totals are not jumping like they were before, which is okay, but we have given over 10,000 total doses of vaccine just Franklin County Health Department, so I think that's pretty awesome to say. 5,681st doses, 4,152nd doses. Of course, we've given 300 Johnson &amp; Johnson. We haven't done anything with those the last couple of weeks and we have completely vaccinated 4,450 people. Yesterday, the Health Department started drive-through vaccines over at the trailer and that will be the plan moving forward. So, they're still administering second doses at the Bottle House and I believe the last day for that is May 12th. But, beginning yesterday, they started the drive-through clinic. I think they gave around 40 doses yesterday for the drive-through and I'll let Nick talk about how that went, as far as I know, it went pretty smoothly. I know Monday, when we were talking about it, it was going to be a lot of just kind of figuring out the best flow of traffic as people came in because they didn't want, they still have people coming there to get tested. OFP patients still come to that trailer to get tested and the Health Department still has a few people that come and get tested through there, so. But we have immediate appointments available and we're really trying to push that on social media and our website, like people can call the Health Department right now and get a vaccine today, so.
What hours are, so you, Monday through Friday or what do you, what do they?
Yeah, it's Monday through Friday, but it just, right now, sort of depends because they have second doses scheduled from previous vaccines that they're trying to schedule the opposite. So, like yesterday, they gave vaccines in the morning because they had second doses scheduled in the afternoon. So, as of right now, they don't have a set schedule because it kind of varies.
I know.
Yeah. Yeah. That's really all I have.
Does any of the, maybe I asked this before, I don't know, do the outside entities that are giving, do they keep, you kind of, the Health Department, do you matter what they have done or?
No, no, and I know, like, for example, if you're shopping in Walmart on a Sunday and you just hear them constantly on the overhead thing, like, "We have vaccines, come get, come get your vaccine" because they've opened a vial and they want to, you know, use up those doses. No, I don't think we have any record of the outside entities.
Because I've seen Price Choppers even advertising.
Yes, and Walgreens just got Pfizer, so I'll go ahead and say this publicly, I know there's a lot of younger individuals, 16 and 17-year-olds, that have been calling to get the vaccine and we can't give it to them because we didn't get Pfizer. But Walgreens does have Pfizer now, so 16 and 17-year-olds can get Pfizer from Walgreens here in Ottawa.
Or any of the doctor's offices doing this or just, are they?
I know that Ottawa Family Physicians had some doses. I'll let Nick talk about that. I believe they had Johnson &amp; Johnson. I'm not sure if they had Moderna, so. That's all I got.
Thanks, Casey. All right, Nick Robbins, go ahead.
Good morning. Just a quick run-through, we are at a 1.9% positivity rate with testing. That's the lowest we've been since we started this back in March a year ago, so we are still seeing a decline in positives. We've only had nine positives since last Wednesday. We have 14 current total positives, so we'll see a few of those dropping off within the next day or two. But we're really, we're seeing a lot of people that have COVID-like symptoms, but with the way the weather is and everything going on, we're seeing a lot more cases of just colds or allergies, but we have been testing a few for that. We've also seen an increase in testing for people to travel, so that's been one of our things we're working with, still testing and working with OU every Wednesday to test their athletes to follow their athletic guidelines. So, in the next couple of weeks, we'll see that drop off, which will drastically decrease the number of tests that we're doing throughout the week. As Casey said, we did start the drive-through yesterday and just like every time we've transitioned to a new practice, we've gotten snow. So, when we did Ottawa Middle School, we got nasty weather. When we moved to the Bottle House, we got nasty weather and we, we did the vaccine clinic yesterday morning in the snow. With that, we pushed out quite a few doses. The thing we're seeing is people not showing up for their vaccine. They're finding it somewhere else. For example, on our online sign-up, we got three people signed up overnight on Monday night. Tuesday morning at 8:15, 8:30, we called them. Two of them had already gotten the vaccine or had a place that they were getting it that morning, so we were able to schedule one out of the three that signed up. And I'll tell you, one of them signed up after midnight and already had the vaccine scheduled at one of our partner locations, so it's readily available. With that, we are seeing, as was said, Walmart is opening vials and begging people to get the vaccine while they're there and that leads us to concern, one of the things we've been very successful at is not wasting doses. And I will tell you, if we did a vaccine clinic every day, we're going to waste doses. There's a lot of thought processes going on with that, that we wait till we have 10 people on the list and then we bring them all in. What we run into that way is if people want it, they're going to find it somewhere else. So, if we only do a vaccine clinic one day a week to get 10 people, we're never going to get 10 because they'll find it elsewhere. So, we're at a tough decision point to, if we do two vaccine clinics a week and hopefully we can get 10 and not waste any doses, it's one of those strategic decisions that we've been thinking about and working with and I'm sure our COVID team this afternoon will talk through that. With that, we're also seeing an increase in the people not showing up for their second dose, which does put us in a pickle as well. We have a standing list of second doses, so we can call people that need it, but we are seeing an increase in the number of people that are either straight telling us they're not going to get the second dose of Moderna or they are just not showing up. So, you asked the question about physician's office. Ottawa Family Physicians has pushed out just over, I think, 100 Johnson &amp; Johnson. As soon as the Johnson &amp; Johnson got put on hold, they did request some Moderna and I believe they have it and they're working out how they're going to push that out as well. So, they are in the process of doing the vaccine clinics as well. One of the things we're hearing and seeing too is Moderna does a 10-dose vial. They're looking to phase that out and move to a 14-dose vial, which if we're having trouble getting 10 people a day and not wasting vaccine, that's going to make us have to find 14, which is, with it being as readily available as it is, going to be tough. We're hoping that they look at getting smaller dose vials so we can do more daily clinics. But as I said, we're working hard to get the vaccines and, for example, today at the drive-through, we have 10 people scheduled, nine first doses and one second dose, and that starts at 9 o'clock today. And as Casey did say, if we do have extra doses, we're trying to put it out on social media that says, "If you want it, call us, we'll get you in right now." We have moved to that scheduling, we have purchased that scheduling program that will allow them to see what we have and sign up and it'll even show a wait time. With that, we plan to have that live with, by the 1st of May. We do training after the 23rd, so that will give us a chance just to say we have 10 doses and people can sign up and see there's no wait and come in and get it. So, we're working with technology to hopefully get this pushed out better. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just a quick question, if you go to Walmart or Walgreens or any of the others, do you pay for it?
It is my understanding that there is an administration fee when you go to those locations.
That possibly is covered by your insurance, if you have insurance.
That should be covered unless you, by insurance, unless you don't have insurance and then I don't know what they're doing with that. I haven't looked into it.
Thank you.
Dawn, you asked a good question about whether our partners in the community are reporting any of this to us and they're not, but I will tell you, we tried. So, when we first became aware that doses were going to start being administered to Walmart and Walgreens and some of the others, we kind of created a plan whereby there would be a lot of reporting and information that would flow up through the county so we could track it all. But unfortunately, as you well know, you know, Walmart doesn't answer to Franklin County. I mean, they have their own corporate protocols, same with Walgreens. I'm sure Price Chopper's the same way. You know, OFP, a great example of an organization that would let us know and let us know exactly how many they've administered and when so we could track. But I want the five of you and our citizens to know, we absolutely had a plan and we wanted to track all of that so we could give the board, like this is what percent of our community has actually been vaccinated, but it just, too many other things got in the way and so, but we tried, so.
All right. Any other questions for Nick?
And just to add to that real quick too, we have been, when we have our short doses, so let's say we have two extras, we will call OFP and they have a list and they have been giving us some names to help fill that up. So, we still work close with them. It's just getting people that can come in, the timeframe we have it, without wasting it and that, so. But they have given us a few of the names they have on their list. The big thing we see is a lot of people wanted the Johnson &amp; Johnson and we're holding out for that, so that's one of the shortfalls we're falling into now.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. The sheriff's here today.
Good morning. In reference to Nick's report there and the relationship between moving around and snowstorms, I'd just make a formal request that he stop moving around.
Yeah. Especially not in July.
Last year, we did not have formal ceremonies for National Corrections Officer Week or National Police Week because of COVID and all the restrictions. Those weeks are coming up, the first couple of weeks of May, and they will be back-to-back Corrections Week and then Peace Officer Week. In Kansas and at the national level, both, the ceremonies for the, for those events have been pushed back till the fall, so those won't happen till the September, October timeframe likely. We will do some things locally, but they will be, they'll be very small and probably more of a virtual thing like we did last year to that. But to that extent, there is an event that's going to take place. It is a bicycle ride called Ride for the Fallen and it's, it's police officers and some others that will ride bicycles from wherever they start and then they end up at the law enforcement memorial in Topeka and that will be May 6th. I bring that up because at each stop along the way, they do a tribute and pay honor to a fallen law enforcement officer and I was, been notified that Sam Smith will be one of the, one of the individuals that will be honored during that, during that ride. As it works out, my brother is a motorcycle officer and he's doing the escort and he's going to be the one that is going to read and pay tribute to Sam, so that was kind of a special deal for me. We don't know for sure exactly where that stop will be that he does that yet because I'm trying to coordinate with Sam's family to make sure that if they are available, that it will be a place where they can be. And when I find that out, then I will probably let Derek know and so that he can pass that along to you guys. But we plan to have some staff there and things. Sam, Sam, his crash that took his life was on July 23rd to 2010, so it's, last year would have, was 10 years and we didn't get to honor that and the significance of that anniversary and so this is a way for us to continue to do that and to honor Katie and the rest of the family as well. So, other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing. David Lee, Public Works.
Good morning. So, as I mentioned last week, our primary focus has been getting ready for dust control. We should have that wrapped up hopefully by the end of this week, early next week and Scott Wood will be starting right on the heels of that, so early next week, folks can expect the application of the dust control material to be put down.
Do we pay for any dust control? Is it entirely pass-through program or is there any areas we do on our dock?
We do not do any areas on our own, but it is mostly funded by the charges that we charge folks, but there's always, it never quite covers the entire cost, so there is some that we pick up on top of that, but we're not, we're not paying for specific areas to be controlled.
Yeah, everybody chips in and always, there's a few dollars missing. Do we do the recycling lot?
We do not.
Okay. I think we had and have it, I don't know that it makes any difference.
Yeah, we haven't in my time anyway.
We're not going to have to because we're going to fix it, right?
There you go.
That's, that's the hope.
Our numbers were pretty down last year. Are they back up again or are they about?
They're similar to what they were last year. I don't have the exact number, but I'll come with that next week, but I think it's similar to what we had last year, which was a little bit down from the previous year. Otherwise, Kilo began work on Monday. They started on Lebat Road at the city limits and worked towards Montana Road. I'm not sure that they're out there today because of the temperatures, but I do expect them to be back on site probably tomorrow and they should finish up here shortly also, first of the week, probably at the latest if weather cooperates. So, as long as Nick doesn't move his clinic again, we should be in good shape. On some other things that I'm working on, I should have a, kind of a concept site plan ready for you all to review sometime soon. I need to schedule some time with Derek to go over that, but that will be coming before you along with a potential project list that I'm close to being completed with. You know, on Monday, we went through the landfill permitting process, kind of where we're at and where we need to go. I'd really like to move forward with that, so unless there's some objections, that'll be formally coming before you to proceed with that project as well. So, lots of big things on the horizon.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
I just want to report to you guys that we have, with Jerry Randall from the EMS's help, we have wrapped up all of the early steps to receive the grant funds from the federal government. It's getting registered with the federal government, which we had a lot of it done already, but we needed to, you know, finish up some steps, make sure everything was cleaned up and ready. The problem for us is that over the years, we've got a lot of different numbers with the federal government, our DUNES number is what they call it. We've also had access at several points to their reporting site, which is called sam.gov and so we had to clean a lot of those things up. So, Jerry Randall in EMS already has access to that for their department to receive funding from the federal government and work with Medicare and Medicaid programs, so she really was instrumental in helping get us done so quickly. They told us initially that it could take three to four weeks to get it done, but we are already done within a week, so I really appreciate their help, but we're ready to go for that.
All right, Commissioner's comments. I think it's time to start on my left. Go ahead, Roy.
Yeah, I'm on the left, okay. This weekend is cleanup, isn't it, David? Countywide cleanup. How's that going with the small towns?
I just took the, oh, the form out of my notebook here that had how many tons had been delivered. I think through last weekend, we've taken in over 8,000 tons of material at both the CND landfill and the transfer station, all of that coming through roll-offs from the various communities. And then Friday, we're set up and ready to go for Freedom Day along with Saturday, so...
Eight thousand tons?
I believe that's what it was. Again, I just glanced at it and took it out of my notebook, but it was, it was pretty significant.
When you get done completely with this, like, be nice to see something in print?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It was $8,000 worth of material that, I remember there was an $8,000.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a lot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not fair, we put you on the spot.
That's why I wanted to see it printed.
Yeah, yeah.
But yes, we can provide that information to you.
All right. Ian?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I've been to a couple of Zoom meetings with ECAN board. Monday night, we, the Personnel Committee, which I'm on... Monday night, we, the Personnel Committee, which I'm on, uh, went through the Personnel Manual, made, made some recommendations for changes. And then we had the full, uh, board meeting on last night, a Zoom meeting again. Uh, went through the Personnel Manual and, and the financials and Head Start Program and all that. And everything with them is going, going well. So, and we might be going back to in-person, uh, in May. So we're looking to go back into, in, in the in-person meetings again.
Seeing a lot of boards start to make that transition. So. Ian?
Um, today is Paul Bean's birthday. Um, our FCDC director. So happy birthday to Paul Bean. It's spring and you see more orange cones and we were just talking about it before the meeting. It's nice to know that the, the state has not forgotten Franklin County. As you go on I-35 up toward Kansas City between here and Wellsville, they're resurfacing. It looks like they're at this point, the southbound lanes and also patching underneath, um, the overpass, um, on, yeah, going out of town, south out of town. So it's nice to see those kind of things happening. Um, the only other thing is if you have not gotten your vaccination and you're still, um, questioning whether you want to do that, there's a lot of information available. I think there's information even on our website. So, um, please make yourself informed because the more people that would get vaccinated, um, the closer that we're going to be to beating this. So I just would encourage you, if you haven't, to do, to do so. And that's it.
All right. Mr. Harris?
I have nothing to add, Cole.
All right. Mr. Stahlmeier?
Yeah, I went to a Wellsville meeting last Wednesday night. Actually, I give a kind of report. Uh, Nick was there and kind of give an update on vaccines and what's going on there. And Paul was there, also give a report, uh, let them know that there's still a little bit of money left in the CARES money, any businesses, not a lot left, but hey, give them a deadline on it. That, that would have to go back to the state if we don't get issued to somebody. So, uh, like I said, and, and Paul does principally, the way I gather, what I've seen, they had to provide him numbers, but it seemed to me like Paul does the majority of the work to even do it for the people and show them, kind of like a tax preparer, sits down and shows them how to lay it all out and how to do it and what they need. And, and just, I've never done one, but just to hear him talk and other people talk, it sounds like he pretty well leads them right through the whole thing. So that's a good deal. The main topic up there yesterday, or last Wednesday night, uh, I, Water District One out of Miami County is offering Wellsville the opportunity to have an alternate hookup through them, which is something they've been looking for. They do Bolwin and, and Lawrence and their costs have just been going up and up and up. And, and this is, uh, District One is expanding and wanting more and Wellsville needs more. So it sounds like they're going to come together on the deal, share the cost of the hookups and everything and get a lower cost and make a better deal. And they're thinking, another thing, they want to step in there and get this settled because they, all of you have probably heard or know, just in that area, they're, they're developing, they've applied for a new city in the, in Miami County, the Golden City. They've already applied with the state. They've already applied with the county. It'll, it'll encompass nine square miles and there's already 700 people that live in that nine square mile just north of Wells, uh, Hillsdale Lake. Between the, give you a clue of why, it's right in between the intermodal and getting close, pushing down that way. So they have applied with the, with the state and applied with the county for recognition and going forward. And the name of it will be Golden. It's after the response to the golden rule, you know, that Larry always uses, everything goes by the golden rule. Well, the actual name of the, the, the city, if it comes to that path, will be named Golden.
That doesn't happen very often.
No, no. How often do you see a, you see something go away?
Yeah, yeah.
But, but, but you hardly ever see one come. And you'll see it around the suburbs of the, of main town. You'll see maybe a new, you know, area or something, but, but not out in the middle of, where they're not bumped up against any other.
Do you happen to know what spurred that? Was there a?
It's development.
But particular?
Development moving down.
Roads or sewers?
Well, no. I think mainly it has to do with the intermodal and the developments pushing their way.
You're not going to need a city hall and, uh, all that? Yeah.
I don't know. They've already applied. It, I read the article in the Miami County paper and then my grandson said there was a big article in the Kansas City Star on, on the, because it's a pretty rare thing to happen. And then development up there has been coming down and buying up, buying up, buying up. Well, that would give them nine square miles, a lot more control over that type of situation. But it's an interesting, interesting thought anyhow, but it's a pretty close to us. So that's all I have. Oh, one more thing. Sorry. I said that we're having the annual Solid Waste Authority meeting. It'd be by Zoom Friday. And when we, they changed the date of the election of officers, the lineup. We're going to talk about it Friday. But, uh, it, they, they've done it for budget and different reasons. But it'll run from April to April and stand like a January to a January. So the, the board, uh, the, uh, Management Committee and then the board of the officers, and there'll be reelections left this Friday.
Don, that's the meeting that all the commissioners are invited to, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So you all should have got us.
Yeah, all, everybody can go online to get on it. In fact, my, thank you for setting this up. I'm able to go right in here. And I've got a, a teleprompter in there and I can take my laptop right in there and, and get online and do that. So.
All right. Well, a new city is more interesting than anything I could come up with, so I don't have anything to add. All right. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All right. Second? Right. All in favor of adjourning. Sam?
Aye.
Any votes that were adjourned? Thank you.